I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and every being just as.
We have no written communication and we have three board committee reports. Ms. LaFolm, I'll let you go first on the list here.
Thank you. I wanted to say that the Policy Committee met on October 28th and we have 11 policies for approval, but we wanted to draw attention to two in particular. The first is a new policy that we approved or we are asking for approval of the first reading. This is Policy 5676 and it is about privacy and security for student data and teacher and principal data. This also includes information from Policy 7243 and that's why I'm at is on the agenda to delete that policy. The second policy we wanted to mention was that we did have an addition of a clause to Policy number 5220, which is for district investments. As per our follow-up item from our board meeting on October 6th, Mr. Gancy, our financial advisor, suggested adding a new clause to allow investment in obligations from municipalities and districts outside of our own district. And Mr. Gancy and Mrs. Wazinski developed the verbiage for Clause G and that is why this policy allows these type of investments and it's up for approval. That's it.
Great.
Mr. Spence. I was virtually ran out of next week. I attended this conference. The content was very valid. It was just so frustrating during the conference. You don't get the interchange of talking to people or who asked the question you want to follow up on. It was tough to pick sessions through the breakout. They said cluster at five or at least four we run at the end. So I attended one in each session, but I gave this to Snowy a thumb grab of law 35. So for her she archives and makes them available. They're just alpha by title and PowerPoint, so you can bang through whatever is of interest and contact names and phone numbers are there for the presenters. Saturday morning was the business meeting. Again, it's kind of surreal because everything had to be done by Zoom, so if someone quote-unquote raised their hand in the Zoom box, they had to be recognized and their faces brought online, so things kind of disjointed. And I'm not sure how many members are in it, but they needed a forum of 200 for the vote leadership and a forum called like 219 for all of us. And basic directions of this board, I can't sure, directions. So that was just kind of a long, clunky experience.
It's a clunky, funky person too.
I had points on the outside, meeting stuff, coffee, some lunches. You would have figured way somebody answered a question that you wanted to hear.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I also attended the Ms. LaFolm conference and also the law seminar piece, which was is normally a day at the very beginning of the conference. We did it two half-days before. And I just, you know, I think as board members, you know, it is so wonderful to be able to have this type of professional development available to us. The conference sessions were amazing. The law conference sessions were really interesting as well. I can also provide that stuff to Ms. Snowy to put on our site, the faculty's for that as well. So, you know, I thought it was a great setup, you know, for a virtual conference. The web portal that we had access to, they did a nice job of that. And, you know, the content is still available, the presentations themselves are still available for a couple more weeks. If you want to go back or if there's anybody who's interested in checking.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll get into the super test report.
Great. Well, as Mrs. LaFolm mentioned, we have an update on one of our policies that is on the agenda for you to approve related to data privacy and EdLaw 2D. Welcome back, Shannon.
All right, so this evening, this evening I'm presenting on education law 2D, which will be Policy 5676 that you're voting on tonight. And in July, in the middle of the pandemic, was also the time we were told we need to start implementing education law 2D at July of 2020. So the education law 2D is, the foundation of it is on four federal laws. It's on FERPA, which focuses on the fact that students and parents have the right to review their educational documentation within a school district. Also on COPA, which is Children's Online Privacy Protection, which protects students online under the age of 13. Another online protection is the Children's Internet Protection Act, which is also a federal law. And this is where we look at our infrastructure and filters in order to protect students from harmful online content. And then finally, the Protection of Pupil Rights Amendment, which is specific rights for minor students to personally identifiable information into surveys that are in schools. They can reject to do that if they so choose. So this is where the law is emanating from, these four basic federal regulations. Now we're pulling it into the state level. So data is a powerful tool, right? We learn about students' academic achievement. We learn information about parents and empowering families to work with schools as well as school operations. However, it also requires us to be very responsible with that information. That information that we collect on teachers, information that we collect on students and principals. And specifically, the information I'm talking about is personally identifiable information referred to as PII. This can be any one or combination of the following: a student or teacher or principal's first name, last name, email address, home address, phone number, and birthday. So for example, I log into an educational application and I have to put my email address, my first name, and my birthday. I have now put in three pieces of personally identifiable information. So that's where the resources would be used in education setting. Schools' infrastructure store this PII in multiple places. We put it in our Aspen Student Management Systems or databases, for example, our special education database, transportation, health, food services, educational software. For our teachers, the eDoctrine we use, which keeps all of their record of their performance in there and has personally identifiable information in there, email systems, as well as simple things like a swipe card to get into a building, visitor identification systems that are in place, finance software, yearbooks, et cetera. So there's a lot of places that this personally identifiable information is stored, hence why this policy is going into play. So the good news is misery loves company and we aren't the only ones that get to do this. So school districts, and I'm going to talk about us specifically, are required to follow this law, but so is New York State Department of Education. They have a lot of accountability data on our students and on our teachers and personally identifiable information. They too have to follow this law. As well as BOSIs or any third-party contractors or vendors that we work with have to also follow these laws. I'm specifically going to focus on us and our relationship with vendors and our parents and students for this piece. So there's eight overarching points that we look at within this policy, which have a lot of finer points underneath, and the list is there for you to look at. I'm going to take you through them briefly. So transparency, the law requires us to use plain and simple language with our parents and tell them what their rights are. So we have done that on our website. A ball goes well. We have a Parents' Bill of Rights on our website, which shares with parents the different pieces of information that they might need to know or want to know around where their students' information is going. For example, we tell them, we can't sell their personally identifiable information or work with a company that will. And you might think that sounds crazy, but one of the things I've been learning in all the vendor contracts I've been getting is what is our agreement? When you get our student information, what do you do with it? Can you sell that? Can you share that with a marketing agent? What are you doing with that information? And if they are doing any of those types of actions, we don't work with them. We can no longer use those resources. So the Parents' Bill of Rights is there and summarizes 5676 in a way that they can understand it. We also, whoa. We also have, are required by law to have a parent portal that provides our parents, this will take a second to load. We're on the finishing touches with this. It shows the parents what applications their students are using within the district so that they can, they have the right to know and then tell us that maybe they don't want their students in particular applications as well. So we have built folders so far, and these are our approved applications, and I can scroll through. But if I were to take Amplify, which we're using for science, I have information on there for the parents to see. So there's some of the information, you know, it's kind of hard to see right now, but it describes what it is and then we link to all their privacy policies. So we're required by this law to link all the applications we're using on a parent portal and we need to link their privacy policy and then also our contract. And we're in the process of transitioning all of our contracts to add to this as well. So everything that is approved is on there. We also have, not just what we have approved. Wait for it. We also have a file here, which is under review and this next one is not approved. So the unfortunate thing that I've noticed is a trend or a pattern is smaller companies are having trouble complying because they don't have a SWAT team of lawyers. And the one thing New York State hasn't done is centralized the contracts. So we all have different contracts. And so if you are a small business and you have to take every school district's contract and they're slightly different and review them and sign them, it's very labor intensive. So a couple of things happen. We will send out a contract to a company with our specifications about what can happen with that data. And sometimes they send it back to me and they want to add a few lines into our contract. And then I send them over to Snowy and she sends them out to our lawyer who says, this is within compliance or not. And others accept right away and some will not sign. And the disappointing news is then I have to tell the teachers, you can no longer use that, which is new. So in order to help our teachers understand this, we also, hopefully this will all open. We have a teacher portal and we're informing them as well. This is internally for teachers. And I have a New York State Education Law 2D tab. I'll scroll down for you. So we have our Tigers that are approved, software, under review, or not approved. So what happens is the teachers will put in a request for us to review software and then we will go and try to get that contract for them and anything that is approved is under review, goes under the middle list, the orange or the yellow, just like a stoplight. We're holding on that. And once it's approved, we shift it over to the green. If it's rejected, we go to the red. But this helps our teachers know what's approved and what's not, because prior to this, they basically could just go whatever, use whatever application they wanted. If it's free and nobody had to pay for it, then they could just have kids in on it in their classrooms and it was okay. This is a real change in behavior. This is meant to keep them informed. So we do constant reviews weekly on different softwares that they want. And the last thing is with the transparency, we have to have a policy in play, which is what you're voting on this evening. So the next part of this is we have to have a cybersecurity framework so that we can identify risks, manage risks, and assess it continuously and make changes within our system. So this was actually used first when the Obama administration and during that time it was used in a government agency. We're one of the beginning states to actually use it with schools, so stay tuned. But it's very comprehensive and we're using it right now in our district. I spoke a little bit about this, so there's not much more to go in depth. I do have contracts made from our district that our lawyers made up for us that were compliant with the regulations and we get those signed from our vendors and that means now we can work with you and you will keep students' personally identifiable information safe. Another aspect of EdLaw 2D is they had to designate, Tony got to designate a data protection officer. I won the award. I think it comes with that assistant superintendent with the technology at the end. So I'm a designated data protection officer. Every district has to have one and I have certain responsibilities in this role with our technology integration that I have to focus on. So implementing policies, ensuring that we comply with state and federal laws, informing parents of how data is used and keeping that data safe, negotiating contracts, that has been the most enjoyable part so far, maintaining data security and privacy action. Mr. Watson, Brandon Watson, we meet often, usually at seven in the morning, sometimes on Mondays or Tuesdays, and we are taking apart that NIST framework and we're slowly plugging in the answers and systems and frameworks around that because it's a very big lift. We are also required to provide professional development and I'll talk about that in a minute. And I'm also required to investigate any breaches or incidents. So annually, we provide professional development focused on teachers and staff members understanding threat recognitions and also doing information handling, password management, like 1, 2, 3, 4 is probably not really good, digital citizenship, and also laws, policies, and procedures. And this has to be an annual professional development that's required. We also have to have a procedure in place for incident notification. So if we have a breach, we have 60 days in order to inform. In order to do an investigation, we have to identify when it was, when the breach occurred for its unauthorized release of information and what it was, and we have to inform the parents and the child or children of it as well as the chief information officer for the state. So there's a bunch of us data protection officers who report to the chief of the state, any incidents that occur. And those are the steps that are there that I went through. Finally, the last part of this, this new policy is we have to have a way for parents to report breaches themselves to us. So that is in there and they have 30 days, we have 30 days to respond to them and to do an investigation and then proceed forward with, you know, with what our findings are and if something needs to be addressed or not at that point in time. So I think that's the end. So that's in a nutshell, a very large data security policy, but those are the big overarching pieces in there. I will tell you, schools are a top area to impact, which I didn't know before I took this little job because we often don't have enough, our applications are older, our machines are older, and we usually don't have the money to build the cybersecurity development that we need. We're pretty strong and we have a really good system built up right now, so I feel confident with where we are. But it's not, at first I was thinking, how much is this really happening in schools? It happens more than we should actually think. So we're on top.
This is a big undertaking in normal times and layered on top of everything else that's been going on since March in your job. You've done a great job with this, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Wazinski is here to share the first presentation of the budget development process for 2122, which is an update on our fund balance and reserves long-range plan.
Thank you. All right, so each year we review our fund balance and reserve long-range plan. So we're required to have a plan on our website that identifies what our reserves are, how they were created, when, what the funding method is, how we're watching everything, how we're monitoring it, what the funding levels are and what our plans are for that reserve. So this document captures all of that information for all of our reserves and our fund balances. This is a draft because this is meant to be a starting point for board conversation and I will go through and make whatever changes are needed based on our conversations tonight. And then this will be presented to you in our next meeting for approval and then we'll put it up on our website. It's our launching point for budget, but it helps guide some of our decisions as we move into budget development for the following fiscal year because it helps us know what reserves we have available, what we've used, what we haven't used, where we want to put a little more money, where we want to use a little bit of money. So the first one is the reserve for retirement contribution. As we go through, when you see text that's highlighted in blue, those are more significant changes from what we have adopted in the past. So I just wanted to call that out to your attention. So our retirement contribution reserve is meant for payments to our New York State Employee Retirement System. So typically, we recommend having two years' worth of payments in this reserve. Currently, it's a little bit underfunded. There's 1.2 million and two years' worth of payments would be closer to 1.5 million. So we do have a recommended increase listed of $230,000. Along with that, created in 2018, was the sub-fund for that same reserve, which was new and allowed us to start saving for TIRs contributions, which is another retirement contribution payment that districts make every year based on our TIR salaries or our teacher salaries. We are allowed to contribute 2% of the prior year salaries. So our recommendation is to continue putting that 2% in because it is limited. We have done that for the first two years, but we have appropriated 250,000 out of this reserve to help balance next year's budget. So it is possible that we'll end up using some of that this year. But if we are to add the 2%, that would be just under 500,000 for this year, which would be the maximum amount that we could add to that reserve. Employee benefits for accrued liability is a reserve that holds funds that would cover payments for when employees leave the district or retire. So every year as part of our audit, we calculate our compensated absences, which is the amount of payments we would make if every district, every employee left the district at the same time and we were required to pay out accrued vacation pays or retirement benefits. So that payment, as calculated during our audit, is about 2.5 million dollars. We have just over 1 million in that reserve. So technically, it is underfunded, but the idea that everyone would need the exact same time is not absolutely realistic. But that's a benchmark that the controller's office allows us to use for calculating the maximum level of that reserve. If we were to have that reserve fully funded, we would need another 1.3 million. Unemployment insurance is just for that, to pay our unemployment claims. We are self-funded, so we pay actual claims for unemployment. As in prior years, we have determined that this fund is probably a little bit overfunded. We typically spend anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000 dollars a year in unemployment benefits. However, this year is much different with the COVID pandemic. There were some significant charges to our unemployment costs in the spring and coming into the summer. We did find that the majority of them are fraudulent because we fortunately stayed on payroll throughout the closure. We are working with New York State. We haven't made the payments yet, but to date, we received about 130,000 dollars worth of fraudulent claims. So if we have to pay some of those and then wait to be reimbursed or fight for those reimbursements, this reserve would be something that would be very helpful to help offset some of those costs. So at this time, I'm not recommending that we make any changes to that reserve, even though tip over the past 10 years, we haven't spent that much. But with the unknowns of the pandemic, we just don't know what we might need. I would prefer to see us keep that money there and then make those decisions in the future once things are a little bit back to normal. Our tax cert reserve is a reserve for funds based on litigation when companies or individuals are trying to have their assessments reduced for their properties. And there are times that the district is required to issue refunds if it's determined that a property was over-assessed. We may at some point need to refund some of the school taxes that were paid by an individual. So we're allowed to keep up to 100% of the maximum liability for the open cases that we have with tax cert. Previously, we had a significant number of large cases that fortunately were settled this past year. So while previously, we didn't, we were not fully funded in this reserve, because all of those liabilities fell off, we are fully funded now. We're actually overfunded by about 340,000. So what we are allowed to do with this money is return it to a general fund and then let it go to fund balance and then disperse it to other reserves or use it as the board sees fit based on our financial outlook at that time. So as we're going through the year and we start doing our fund balance projections, we often look at revenues versus expenditures and then the difference is our change in fund balance. This year, you'll see an additional line and we'll include that 340,000, assuming that's what the board wants to, how you want to move with that, we'll include that separately as a line item in our fund balance projections. So that money will come out of the reserve, will go into our overall fund balance and then the board will have the opportunity to decide if you want to move it back into a different reserve and at what level and how much. Our capital reserve was established by the voters in May of 2017 with a maximum funding level of 500,000 dollars. And this is used to offset the local share for future capital projects. To date, we funded 300,000 in this reserve. So the current balance is 3,200,000 and 1 dollar. We do have room for another 200,000 dollars in that reserve if we choose to fully fund that. So those are all of our restricted reserves that are established for a specific purpose. The following three items are different types of fund balance. So our first balance is unassigned fund balance and this is the fund balance that everyone typically thinks of as the 4%. So we are required to maintain 4% of next year's budget or less. This year, we did make the decision to exceed that again because of our unknown finances with both revenues and expenditures. So our year-end unappropriated fund balance was about 5.5 million dollars. If we were at 4% per next year, we would be at about 2.5 million. So we would have about 2.9 million dollars that we would either use this year to offset revenue shortfalls or higher expenditures, or we could move those into reserves or we could move that into next year's budget to help support any deficit for next year as well. Our assigned fund balance is what we appropriate to future years. So this year, we had just over a million dollars and that included the 704,000 that we appropriated to close our gap as well as just over 300,000 in rollover purchase orders. So those are purchase orders that were on the books prior to June 30th, but the items didn't come in yet and the dance hadn't been made, so we rolled those over into this year. So we're actually using last year's dollars to complete those purchases. And then our final is our debt service fund. And this is a separate accounting of funds that are derived from interest in our capital projects accounts or premiums that we receive from our bond borrowers. And then we use those funds to help pay down our debt service through the year. The interest in the account has accrued to about 224,000. So those funds will be available to us to use during budget development to help offset some of our debt payments and help close any budgetary gaps that we may have. So again, this is just a brief overview of all of our reserves. All of the recommendations are just that, recommendations. This is a living document that we can change throughout the year and we can use it to help guide our decisions throughout budget development and into the next fiscal year. help guide our decisions throughout budget development and into the next fiscal year. Are there any questions or comments about any of the reserves or any of the recommendations for increases or decreases? Not that the decisions need to be made and finalized right now, but this would be an ongoing plan and I can change the language prior to adoption if anyone wanted.
This is helpful when we're developing the budget, if there is a gap that needs to be addressed. And then, as you may recall, we typically come back to this plan in June when we're looking at fund balance projections to determine if there's money available at year end, where we would look to fund this. So there's a couple of things we'll look to talk about in the spring. I think one would be that tax cert reserve and what our potential liability may be there. Also, you may recall, last spring, we were going to propose a new capital project reserve. And then we pulled that at the last minute due to the mechanism for how the budget vote was conducted. We may want to revisit that conversation. And then obviously, the third thing would be if there's money available at year end, what reserves would be fun as we close out the books over July and August? Thank you for updating that plan. It's a very useful tool for us. Good job. To put together a virtual presentation so we could maintain social distancing.
Our board of education and superintendent Fennella for the opportunity to present our student of the month. This is a great tradition of us and we really are eager and always excited to share and spotlight the accomplishments of our students and teachers. I'm helped on a monthly basis in this process by our cap finders and Ms. Shuffock, the advisor, as well as this month's cap finder community was Marla Barret, Tessa Seckel, Hannah Flye, Jeff Cook, Randy Barry, Andrew Shaw, Julie Mench, Kelly Freckle, Melon Zing, Hannah Gableman, Taylor Dussells, Samantha Stack and Julie Zent. Thank you for your help with this program. Our first recognition for September goes to Eric Bruce Beck. He was our, one of our students of the month. Eric is a trailblazer, sophomore leader, big part of our staff with the low question welcoming program this year. Eric personally made over 100, posted positive messages and was diligent about making sure he was on the team and posted those notes on over 200 blockers. Eric was a key leader in this program and it happened at a really busy time for everyone, so I was grateful for that help. Beyond that, a trailblazer, Eric is really working as an awesome student, always a friend of mine. Ms. Raff had shared that this is the second year she's had Eric in class. His material has grown, his habit, she's been really impressed with his commitment and really worked and had a great grade this year. Also, first of all, respectful young man, always doing his 100%. Ms. Saliva shared that Eric always has a good morning and had a nice day for her. When he's coming to go in class, she said she was really pleased to have him and studied hard this year, a very nice, nice young man. As well as Mr. Berger had shared that Eric has really proven himself to be a hard worker and he was a very young man this year. He's been in class, a positive role model. Our second student of the month, Shelby Nish for September. Shelby was also a trailblazer and was also a big part of the staff with the low question program this year. Personally, we were over 50, posted notes and was super diligent in bringing them up to the school to me on a couple occasions. And it's not surprising Shelby has volunteered for almost everything since she's been a trailblazer. She's the first one to step forward whenever I've asked for help. And beyond her trailblazer leadership, Shelby's a really good student, classroom leader and a very positive young lady. Ms. Evans has shared that Shelby's in our homeroom, known her for two years, her positive energy is infectious. She has greatly improved her skills and has become an official member of our homeroom. She really sets up to take initiative and involvement activities and is always so bright. Ms. Raff, I then shared that Shelby's really doing a fantastic job, very engaging discussions, asking questions, sharing ideas. This is really important this year because folks and students have felt very reluctant in giving us some dessert and participating in a Zoom environment, but Shelby really shows them how easily that can be done by speaking up and her interest and effort and reading and the writing tasks in classes to have. Ms. Renner, who shared with Spanish three hours, something very similar to me, great student, Shelby always participates and really helps create this kind of inclusive environment we're looking for in remote learning and hybrid learning. Very respectful young lady, always prepared and a pleasure to have in class. Congratulations to Shelby and Eric for this ever student of the month. On the teacher's side, Mr. Crock was nominated by Sarah Pateras. She said that I think Mr. Crock should be the teacher of the month because he's doing really well in this Zoom model online where he has been able to help students from everywhere, from trying to help them just to get on the symbol, but also just figuring out how to navigate Google Maps, Google Classroom. Mr. Crock is always there to help and he's also a very easy to handle, clarifying bits and giving materials to his students. I'm super proud of Mr. Crock, myself personally. He has persevered through the technology curve. He brings some deep thoughts to how to harness technology while still preserving those traditional aspects of in-person learning and those kind of insights that dichotomy is important to our whole school preserve, the core of classic interaction in classrooms, but then harnessing the best of what this technology can bring us. Another technology, Mr. Crock is a resident orange stoner of the district. He is always beautifying that courtyard and working super hard in the courtyard that I see in very summer and fall, at all times doing spruce in the courtyard as well as creating the brain, the garden last fall. The garden was off the ground this year and if you haven't seen it, it's only the Washington highly agreeable, I call that area. And what the garden needed, everything improved there amazingly. He had some students helping him out with that project. So that was a bright spot as he migrated through COVID, spring shut down, there was never lights and having that creative garden available to our students and such. Also, the teacher of the month, Ms. Brown Tree for September. She was nominated by Samantha Jarry, who still did, she's been nominated for Ms. Brown Tree. She's always doing an amazing job of making students feel at home when they're in the classroom. And there's always talking, building between our home environment and our students in the classroom that it is a key thing that we wanted to happen with that hybrid model. Ms. Brown Tree's making it happen. There's a Zoom classroom, a Zoom project together where she's making sure everyone understands what's going on in many different places, where the teacher's going at her best. So congratulations to Ms. Brown Tree. Moving on as well, on a monthly basis, many of our C T D students are recognized by either Penn Town or Parkus and the Power World Center. Congratulations to Taylor Wolf. She was nominated as student of the month in her past college one class by Ms. Blackman, who sees her to be someone that has excellent attention, attendance, I should say, I'm sure it's excellent attention as well. Always wears her uniform and is ready to work and has a wonderful attitude. Congratulations to Taylor, that she recognized over her C T D program. Moving on to October, our students of the month are the bottom students, Isabella, Nicholas and Maria. I had a heck of a time putting together this nomination because they're always spoke to and spoken about them three. So I'm going to read this to you, but it includes an oscillation between Nick Murray and Isabella in no particular, or Nick Murray and Isabella, I'll reserve you being the students of the month. And the three are the kindest and friendly students I've had in pleasure teaching. They treat both their teachers and peers with a purity of most expect. Maria works hard in class, ready now, but she's always willing to work with other students, whether to collaborate and help out a student question. She never fails to say, oh my, I'm waiting to class and how do those on the way out. Isabella is never afraid to pick a can. Lots of students have self-conscious about speaking in foreign language. Isabella is definitely that one who's shy of participating in class and getting that clearance to improve the student Spanish and always telling her to be class human. Maria is serious about her studies, dedicated to life, diligent in her work and has an impressive attention to detail. She's doing this right, especially as talent is quite impressive and that receives still amazing. I'm so proud Maria Isabella and me. As my students, I look forward to teaching them every day and will most certainly graduate. That's from Ms. Gonzalez. Isabella is a patient, polite student, wearing a mask, emotion smiling. Mr. Crock shared. Maria and Isabella are always leaders in our homeroom, especially always willing to help out Mr. Kenzie. These three are among the kindest, sweetest and friendly students. They're very talented, have an absolute pleasure in class, the positive attitude is so contagious. Nick, a participant with whom I am most familiar, is an incredible artist. The true love is definitely worthy of this award. Ms. Evans. I have met all three of the bottom students and from that I used to the past few years. They're always willing to lend a hand if you needed to help out. They have great energy, polite, or lightening behind, making students feel welcome. They were around in many different groups in sports in the high school. I have known Maria since she was a freshman and had her as a student. I remember Isabella also involved in fundraises, but we couldn't get her phone society that said. I know their team were one of the finalists for students of the year fundraisers. They're no deserting this award, lucky to have them as part of the average community. Congratulations to Michelle Fox. Remember, for seven great kids, each of them with different personalities and strengths, all hardworking and dedicated students, a pleasure to have all three. Mr. Berger, bottom two of the students are the most perfect type factor. I have never had the pleasure of knowing, had hoped, who had Isabella in my science classes and labs. Although I've never had the pleasure of having Nick in my courses, I've had the pleasure of speaking with Nick outside of class. Remember, Nick, Maria and Isabella are everything you want in a student. They're determined, hyper, passionate, respectful. All three of them bring smiles to their face in everything they do. They all learn at their classroom, their passion, bigger for learning and life. Nick, Maria and Isabella have been the respect of the faculty and ambers and I know they will continually adhere to themselves, use values to explain their ambers whenever they need them, the next things that their likes and where their education takes them. And congratulations to Nick, Maria, Isabella, our own doctor lovers, a quite a true lover we got and quite a treasure that has tires. Teachers of the month for October, Ms. Evans was nominated by cap finder Hannah Gableman. Ms. Evans is always cheerful, lovely and has a, always has a smile on her, of positivity and encouragement, never fails to fill the class. Given that she is a C T D teacher, she is a very helpful at guiding students to find the careers that suit them. Usually, we can find her selling baked goods and her scrunchies for decades and really showing off her school student, always a positive element and I've known Ms. Evans. Congratulations. And I have heard to teacher of the month, Mr. Eric for October as well. Mr. Eric always has a friendly attitude towards both his students and his fellow teaching peers. He brings every student with a warm welcome and a nice smile, professional and helpful demeanor, makes his teaching very effective. Although he holds students to high standards, he's always happy to help a student in the struggle. He goes far behind and helps students flourish in his class. And he always encourages his students to try their very best and persevere. Outside the classroom, Mr. Eric is the assistant coach for the varsity golf team. He's incredibly supportive and always does his best to motivate team members while giving them a full advice. Undoubtedly, Mr. Eric very much deserves the teacher of the month award. Congratulations to that. You have a trend tile, so thank you as always, Lord of Education Superintendent Fennella for this opportunity to shine a spotlight on the wonderful teachers and wonderful students in our high school. Have a great rest of your meeting. Thank you.
Well, thankful that we were able to still honor our teachers and students of the month. Thankful for Mr. Pigeon for being creative and doing it in a way that's safe, you know, given the circumstances we're in. And it's great to hear all of the wonderful things that are happening in our high school with our teachers and our students, given the circumstances we face. So thank you.
Great, thank you. With that, we need a motion for new business items.
I'll make a motion for new business items E1A through B, 2A through D and 3D.
We have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving new business items E1A through B, 2A through D and 3D, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Ms. Custody, do we have any follow-up action then?
There are none.
Great. Let me just need a motion to convene to executive session.
I'll make a motion to go to executive session to discuss matters regarding the employment of a particular person.
We have a second? Ms. Lee, along. All those in favor of convening to executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries six zero. Thank you for coming, Patrick.